Thank you all with liberty. Um, can we get a roll call, Beth?
Commissioner Blanco?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Seifert?
Here.
And Chair Dickerson.
Here. Uh, we will now move on to the approval of the minutes for, um, well, I guess, Dana, is this one you want to make your statement?
Um, Chair, we can, we can go ahead and do the minutes and then I'll make my statement before the next part where we do public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that sounds fine. Um, so, uh, we need an approval of minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of December 15th. If everyone has had a chance to read it, if anybody has any objections to it or modifications, they should let us know, otherwise, uh, we need a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes for the December 15th meeting.
I'll second that motion. I'm sorry, I'll second that motion. Commissioner Lopez seconds. Um, and Beth, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
And Chair Dickerson.
Aye. Dana?
Thank you. Um, if you, so the next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Um, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, and these are for items that are not agenda, on the agenda for tonight, um, please use the raised hand icon on the Zoom platform. Once you are recognized, you will then be unmuted and allowed to comment on the business at hand in the order received. The maximum comment time is three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. If you are calling in and wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand by dialing star nine and then identify yourself when unmuted. And that's for those that are on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, well, moving on to the public here, uh, comment period, once again, as Dana said, each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited discussion of three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. Uh, Dana, do we have anyone wants to, um, discuss anything outside of the agenda?
I do not see any hands raised on Zoom and we do not have any, um, uh, comment slips filled out here in the room.
Okay. Great. We will move on then to the consent calendar. The consent, consent calendar is approved with one motion. These items are read only on request of commission members. Should anyone, including members of the public, wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered as a separate item. We have a single item on that, the Westgate Village Marketplace Permit Amendment at Northwest Corner of West Bowers Road and South Blosser. Um, does anyone wish to either speak about it or have it pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, um, we need a motion for the consent calendar in a second.
I move, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Seifert seconds, and Beth, can we get a, a roll call?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
And Chair Dickerson.
Aye. Um, there's going to be a little bit of a, um, uh, rearranging of the, uh, agenda, uh, to accommodate, uh, Commissioner, uh, Seifert, uh, needing to recuse himself from Agenda Item Four and therefore him being able to, uh, to leave after Agenda Item Three. So we're going to take, uh, Agenda Item Five, Election of Officers, as the next item. Uh, what I'll do is I will now, uh, we, we have chairperson, vice chair, and then we have, uh, appointees to committees for subdivision, uh, review committee and downtown revitalization committee. Um, I'll now ask, uh, if any of the commissioners would like to nominate anyone, uh, for chairperson, and if so, they need to make a motion and then we'll have a second and a vote.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Dickerson as a chairperson.
Well, thank you. That's nice. Uh, do we have a second? I'll second that motion. All right, Beth, we need a vote.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
You're muted, Tim.
Thank you. Can I abstain?
Sure.
Abstain.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
And Chair Dickerson.
Aye. Um, we'll now ask if any of the commissioners would like to nominate anyone for vice chair. Uh, once again, we need a motion and a second.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Seifert as vice chair.
I'll second. Okay. Commissioner Seifert here, who already will do accept the nomination if thrust upon you?
I do, thank you, Beth.
All right. Uh, we need a, uh, we need a vote, Beth.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
And Chair Dickerson.
Aye. Um, subdivision review committee, um, does somebody, would, would somebody like to take that? Tim?
Yeah.
I would like to, uh, make a motion that Tim Seifert, uh, um, be on the subdivision review committee.
Would like to second that?
We need a vote.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
And Commissioner Blanco.
Aye.
Um, would somebody like to volunteer for the downtown revitalization committee? Tom, you were on that before, would you like to do it again, or?
I'll do it if nobody else wants to, I'll do it.
Yeah? Okay.
I would, I would like to nominate Commissioner Lopez.
Okay, I'll second. Beth?
All right, Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
And Commissioner Blanco.
Aye. There we go. Okay, agenda, Agenda Item One has been dealt with, uh, or I guess that would be Two. So now we will move on to Agenda Item Two, Continued Item Sunset Recycling Center Plan Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit at 1465 South Broadway. Uh, can we hear from staff?
Oh, yes, thank you, Chair Dickerson. Uh, good evening, my name's Cody Graybell. I am an associate planner with the city, and tonight I'll be presenting the Sunset Recycling Project at 1465 South Broadway to establish a buyback recycling facility. Um, this item has been continued two times previously. It was initially heard by the Planning Commission on October 6th, 2021, and was continued, and then the applicant requested to continue the item at the December 15th hearing. So the facility is located between West Soul Road and West Enos Drive to the north and south, and South Broadway and South Depot Street to the east and west, and is located at the Santa Maria Shopping Center and is at the southern end of the shopping center next to the Foods Co grocery store and gas station parking lot. The site is zoned PDC One for Plan Development Central Business District and is surrounded by a mix of mostly commercial and residential zoning, so along the Broadway corridor, we have commercial zoning, and then to the west and to the east is residential zoning. So the facility would only accept California redemption value beverage containers, which include eligible aluminum, plastic, and glass products, and would comply with the California Beverage Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act and would be certified. The hours of operation are seven days a week, and during the weekdays would be open from nine to five, and then during the weekends it'd be open from nine to four. There is a maintenance plan in place, which includes daily cleaning and biweekly surface power washing by the onsite employee, and the metal storage containers would be exchanged as needed to avoid any overflow. So during the October 6th hearing, there was concerns expressed about the location of the proposal and its potential impacts on circulation and aesthetics, and the initial design shown on the left only provided 10 feet of separation from the adjacent north-south drive aisle that leads to the Broadway entrance and exit lanes, and the revised location shown on the right, which we're considering today, now provides 30 feet of separation from the same drive aisle, and it also has been moved one parking row up to the north away from the lanes leading to Broadway. So this additional separation, excuse me, provides adequate space for customers to completely navigate from the drive aisle into the parking lot without having to stop or obstruct the flow of traffic prior to unloading materials. And the applicant has also revised the orientation of the facility, so the metal containers are now facing the interior of the parking lot, which is shown with the red arrow, and that addressed some of the aesthetic concerns that were, um, discussed at the first hearing. So there were four different locations that staff looked at with the applicant. The first is shown at the top of the screen, and ultimately, the applicant and Foods Co weren't able to come to an agreement at that location because it's too far away from the Foods Co shopping building, and then the middle location was considered but ultimately not selected because it takes up too many of the valued parking spaces that the Foods Co patrons utilize. And then the third location, shown next to the gas station, ended up not being selected because it actually has a higher level of vehicle flow, um, and there's, um, gas trucks that have to come in and, um, provide, you know, refueling of the, the gas site, and adequate space needs to be provided, um, for those maneuvering, um, trips. And then behind Foods Co was also looked at, but ultimately not selected due to the lack of visibility and some safety concerns that have been expressed by the applicant. So just for context, um, the area in yellow is what we're considering tonight, and it was shown on the prior slide. So this is the design of the facility. There's two different components, there's the public kiosk, and then there's metal storage containers. So the top two images on the left show the kiosk component, and then the bottom images are showing the metal storage containers, and there also are landscape planters proposed adjacent to the containers that would fully screen the facility from view. So in total, the facility is just under 500 square feet, and it would take up approximately eight parking spaces. Staff also has generated some project-specific conditions addressing circulation and aesthetics. So Condition Three regulates the outdoor storage and limits it to the approved containers only. Condition Six requires that the employee manage the customer and container queuing. Condition Eight requires that short-term parking be provided, um, next to the facility, and then Condition Eleven requires ongoing site maintenance, including picking up all litter at the end of the day, and then biweekly power washing, as mentioned. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, by motion, conditionally approve Plan Development PD 2021 dash zero 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 nine and Conditional Use Permit U 2021 dash zero 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 five. Thank you, the applicant and staff are now available for questions.
Thank you, Cody. Uh, Commissioner Seifert, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, Cody, on your, hey, plan, I see that it's moved down substantially. You didn't show exactly where Community Bank was. Do, do we have a graphic so that we could kind of see where that parking slot is comparatively? I'm not exactly sure how close we are.
Um, so, Commissioner Seifert, let me pull the presentation back up and see if we can, um, point that out. Okay, one second, sorry about that. Let's see, this may be the, the best image.
I'm sorry, Cody, can I just interrupt for a moment? You know, I, I forgot to ask, uh, disclosure of any commissioners' communications with, uh, the applicants. Uh, have any of the commissioners had any communications with the applicants?
No.
Okay. All right, seeing none, um, I just wanted for the record.
So.
I'm sorry, go on.
Uh, Commissioner Seifert, so this image, um, shows the bank here, and I believe it's, it's at least gonna be...
All right, so it's, it's like one, two, it's like three bays over, three parking bays over from the bank?
Yeah, at least five, I would say, um, parking rows over.
And where is the, there's the gas station. So where is the, um, uh, exit onto Broadway, is that, um, yeah, right there. Perfect. Thank you very much.
And then, are there any other questions at this time of staff? No? All right, then, um, let's go ahead and, uh, have the applicant give their presentation.
It's Beth, if you want. Sure. I see a, a hand raised, it's a phone number, though, so I'm not sure if it's the applicant, but I have allowed them to unmute. Um, go ahead and please state your name.
Good evening, City of, uh, Santa Maria Planning Commission, my name is Artasha Stalvian. I am actually the applicant for the recycling center, and, um, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, um, and, uh, um, do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Uh, Commissioner Lopez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, uh, a couple of questions. Uh, one, are you required to have a bathroom? A bathroom facility?
No, we're actually allowed to use the Foods Co restroom.
Okay, 'cause I, I recall when the, when the gas station kiosk came in, they had put a bathroom out there because it was too far from the Foods Co, um, uh, bathroom facilities. And this, it seems like it's even further.
Yeah, usually the location that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, so, are you, are you gonna be willing to put in bathroom facilities for, for this, for this kiosk?
I mean, usually where the locations that we serve, uh, we don't, we're, we're allowed to use the, the supermarket's restroom, uh, but is that something that you guys want me to place there, like a porta potty?
No, like, like, regular facilities that are ADA compliant. It, it, here's, here's the reason I'm bringing it up. The kiosk at the gas station was required to put that in. It was over the 600-foot distance that the uniform plumbing code, the California plumbing code allowed, so they had to put a bathroom in. This seems like it's a little further than, than, uh, where that gas key, gas station kiosk is.
Yes, uh, so from, from my experience of having, uh, serving a lot of locations throughout Southern California, since we're considered a small collections facility, usually the jurisdictions never ask us to put a restroom there because they know we go to use the, the restroom at the supermarket.
Okay. Then, uh, another question I had is, you guys are gonna do biweekly washing, where does that water go?
So we actually use biodegradable soap, which is good for the plants. Um, we also have the ability to pa, uh, to pump the water through our, uh, vacuum system and put it down to the necessary, um, flush, so it doesn't, uh, so it, we don't violate the stormwater, um, requirements. Absolutely, we keep it clean all the time. Uh, we make sure that, you know, we use stuff and soap that is good for the environment, and like I said, we use biodegradable soap, so it's not bad for the environment.
But you guys vacuum that?
I also, yes, we also mention that in our best, uh, business management practices, uh, about the vacuum pump method that we have, so we don't let a lot of water run off. We actually don't use excess water also, we only use as much water just to make sure that the water, that location that we have in the surrounding area is spotless and it looks immaculate. And of course, obviously, we make sure that there's no bottle caps, either on the floors, and that there's nothing left outside at the end of the day.
Okay. Look, looking at the conditional use permit, there's water conditions, uh, that talk about additional water fixtures, it talks about additional sewer service, so none of that's gonna be proposed?
No, no, no sewer service, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lopez. Do we have, uh, any other questions of the applicant by other commission members? Okay, seeing none, uh, then we will, uh, thank, thank you, sir, I appreciate your, uh, your time. Uh, do we have any?
Very well.
Yeah. Do, do we have any written communications and/or, uh, public comment on this item?
Chair Dickerson, commissioners, we do not have any written co, public comment, um, but we could ask, um, I, I'm not seeing any hands raised, but we could ask for that.
If you are on the public and would like to, uh, comment on this, uh, particular, um, item, uh, raise your hands at this time. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and, uh, bring it back to the commissioners for discussion and action. Um, does anyone want to weigh in on this?
I see, Chair, I, I realize I have one other question, if, uh, if I may, for staff.
Certainly.
Uh, there was a, Cody, there was a, the four conditions, I think, that were put in your presentation, one was number six, managing the queue of customers or something like that, what, what, I couldn't find that condition written somewhere, what exactly does that mean? What's the condition for that?
Commissioner Blanco, so that condition requires that the onsite employee would ensure that no customers or materials would inadvertently, um, be placed in a drive aisle, so it's just spelling that out more clearly, the responsibility of the employees.
Okay, thank you. And if I may, I actually, sorry, I've got kind of some last questions here, last minute questions, I just realized, um...
Oh, please, by all means.
One other, um, for, maybe for the applicant, in terms of pickup of the containers, how is that done? Is that done at a certain time during regular hours? How do you manage that in a narrow drive aisle that's intended for cars? Do you have to clear out certain stalls? How, how does that work?
Yes, very good question. So what we usually do is, uh, we keep our pickups in the afternoon very minimal, uh, so we don't have any complications. We usually never do, but whenever we try, we, we make it so we pick up, we do our pickups, either early morning or a little bit later on in the afternoon when there's no, um, there's not too much traffic. So we typically don't have any issues with, uh, pickups, because it's done mostly early morning, before anyone even comes to, uh, start the day or park their car, the patrons to go shopping or whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Can I ask a question, staff? Could, could we have that as a, a condition that the sort of pickup has to take place, uh, early, early enough in the morning that it's before, uh, the stores open up? Maybe not before the gas station, I know the gas station probably opens pretty early, but, uh, let's say, you know, before, by eight, by eight o'clock or so?
Uh, yeah, Chair Dickerson, we could add that, um, into the permit tonight.
Okay. All right. Are there, uh, further questions of, uh, the applicant by, uh, by staff? All right, excuse me, by, uh, by the commissioners?
Chair, Chair Dickerson, I'm sorry, I just wanted to jump in and just make one more clarification from what Cody just mentioned. I think that the condition where we could add that requirement in would be, there's a condition number five in the permit that talks about hours of operation, um, that may be one where we could add that information about hours that that pickup would occur. But I just wanted to mention that for clarity.
Okay. Um, all right, um, anything further from, um, from the commissioners? Commissioner Seifert?
Yes, thank you. I just wondered, you know, um, I, I think the, the big recycler on, uh, Loser's been closed for quite a while, these are, I don't think we have a lot of choices for, for recycle anymore. Cody, do you know how many recycle stations we actually have?
Commissioner Seifert, when I looked last at the state's list of certified facilities, we don't have any in the city at the moment, um, and that, that's the extent of the research I've done.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree, uh, I, I believe that, that's probably true. I, I know there's one in Orchid, uh, but I, by Spencer's Market, but ever since the one on Loser closed, I, I'm not sure what we even have to pick up recycling. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Hernandez, do you, uh, have any questions? Oh, yeah? No? All right. Okay, uh, hearing, uh, seeing no questions, uh, does somebody want to, uh, comment about the, uh, anybody want to comment on this and/or make a, uh, motion of some kind or take action?
I, I think it's a good project, I think we need more recycling. Um, I see Commissioner Seifert raised his hand.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Seifert?
Yeah, I just was going to comment, same thing, um, I think it's something that we vitally, you know, it's a vital pri, uh, uh, service that we need in the, in the city, and, you know, I, I, I too use that parking lot quite a bit, Chair, and I, and I know that those spaces are actually underutilized. Now, I, I don't really go in the afternoon, so I'm not super sure about that, but that, that particular section of the parking lot, I, it doesn't really fill up that much. So I remember the, uh, the other commissioners, I wasn't at the first meeting, I was at the second meeting, there was a, there was a lot of, uh, problems with the location being so close to the exit and also, uh, uh, so close to the gas station. So I think they've, they've done a pretty good job of, of moving it as far as a decent site, uh, on, on that property, uh, for this type of facility, um, and it sounds like they're willing to keep it clean and safe. Uh, so I, I think they've, I, I think they have done probably everything they can do to, to meet what the, what the commissioners asked for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Seifert. Um, any other comments? Commissioner Blanco? Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Blo, Lopez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although I, I do agree that we, we need more recycling facilities in town, I, I just don't like the location. Um, I, I, I'm gonna find it very hard to support this, just, just because it's, it's temper, it's a, it's not a permanent structure, um, I just, I, I think it's, it's, it's not a good fit for that front area. I recall the, the recycling center at Bond's over on Main Street, which is an equally travel thoroughfare, and that one, although it was visible from Main Street, it was back maybe 100 feet, 150 feet off of Main Street, so I, I just, I just don't agree with the location. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Uh, Dana, you had a, you had something you wanted to interject with?
Yes, th, thank you, Chair Dickerson. I, I just wanted to mention that we do have an attendee now who does have their hand raised, um, I know we already did call for public comment, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right, let's hear from, let's open it up, back up the public, uh, comment.
Okay, uh, let me go ahead and unmute them. Okay, you should be allowed to speak, uh, if you can unmute yourself, please, and give That doesn't seem to be working.
Okay, um, is she, is she, Miss, have you tried to unmute your, from your end? Oh, it's muted?
Yeah, it looks like the, the hand is no longer, their hand is no longer raised and...
I see.
Yeah, so...
Okay, then we'll, we'll, once again, we'll, we'll bring it back, we'll close the public comment. Um, uh, Commissioner Blanco, did you have anything you wanted to, oh, yes, Commissioner Blanco?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair, I, I, um, I tend to, I tend to agree with, uh, Commissioner Lopez, I agree with that, uh, statement that he said about location. I, I, I do appreciate that the applicant has been responsive and has really kind of evaluated the options a little bit closer. Um, I, I also do agree, I think it's a little too prominent in terms of the location, too close to the main road like, like Broadway, it has a tremendous amount of visibility, um, like you, like, uh, Commissioner Lopez mentioned, the one off of Main Street easily was a couple of hundred feet back and probably closer to college, um, and s, seemed to be, you know, a, a little bit less prominent. I, I, I think this one, you know, i, is gonna be highly visible regardless of the attempt to kind of screen it, it's, how do you screen those large containers without having something permanent really screen them? I, I don't know that, that trees, you know, are gonna really thrive and really do the job there, so I don't know that the... So I don't know that the screening is really going to work personally. And I just think it's not, not an ideal location for a community to have. Have it there very front and center on a very busy street that does get a lot of traffic and a lot of visibility. I think there's definitely a better place for it. I hope that the applicant is willing to look for one, but this, I don't think this is it. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you, Commissioner Blanco. I have to say, I agree with Commissioner Lopez and Blanco. I mean, to some extent, I agree with Commissioner Seifert and Hernandez. I mean, these are, I think everybody agrees that a recycling facility in Santa Maria is needed. But I bend towards Commissioner Lopez and Blanco in terms of this just probably not being the right place. It's just, it's just too prominent. It's just too right there for a lot of traffic that goes by that area every day. So I have a very difficult time supporting this particular project. That being said, Heather, if we, if someone makes a motion and there's a second and it does not pass, do we need to, does that end it? Or do we need to have some sort of a motion for denial? What do we need to do?
If it doesn't pass, then I would recommend someone make an alternate motion, a motion for denial, and see where that goes. So you, we could go either way and see what happens.
All right. Does anyone want to make a motion for passing?
I will make the motion. I move that we approve Sunset Recycling Center Plan Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit at 1465 South Broadway.
Do we have a second?
A second, ma'am, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Beth, we need a vote?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert? Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Commissioner Blanco?
No.
Commissioner, Chair Dickerson?
No. Does anyone want to make a motion for denial?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
That we do not allow the Conditional Use Permit at 1465 South Broadway.
And Mr. Chairman, this is Heather, if may I just interrupt. I should, when you asked me earlier, I should have also indicated what will happen if there's a motion to deny and that motion passes. Staff will need to come back at the next meeting with a resolution for denial. And in that resolution, there will need to be findings for denial. So the motion to deny can be made, and if it passes, we'll bring, come back with the resolution.
Would you, would you rather the, would you rather not do the denial tonight but come back with the, with the motion, with the, with the item next time for denial at that point?
No, I think you can go ahead and we can hear Commissioner Lopez's motion.
Okay. And does Commissioner Lopez have to give his reasons for? Or do you call that from, from the conversations we've already had?
I might be helpful for staff. The more findings you can articulate justifying the denial, the better. And then staff will, in that resolution that comes back at the next meeting, they will have those facts articulated.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to deny Conditional Use Permit, I'm sorry, the review of the Plan Development Permit PD 2021-009 and Conditional Use Permit U 2021-J-005. I understand what you said, Heather. My basis was the prominent location of the center. I can't recall what some of the land use language would be other than, don't believe it's a good fit for this area due to its prominent nature.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes, if I can step in and help, I believe that would be finding the for Commissioner Lopez. That the proposed use will have no adverse effect upon adjacent property.
Okay.
He cannot make that finding.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. That would be part of my, my, my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Beth, can we have a vote?
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
No.
Commissioner Seifert?
No.
And Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
And Chair Dickerson, Commissioners, this is Dana Eady. The next hearing we have is March 16th, so we would be, we would be coming back on March 16th with the resolution for denial, that meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to agenda item, is it three or four? Continued item, Composite Plastic Systems Inc. Conditional Use Permit at 701 Arctic Avenue. And can we hear from staff?
Okay, thank you, Chair Dickerson. Sorry for the delay there, I was just getting the presentation ready. So the next item I'll be presenting is the Composite Plastic Systems Project to permit an existing cell tower concealment production facility at 701 Arctic Avenue. And this item has been continued from the December 15th, 2021 hearing. So this proposal is also near the center of the city. It's between East Boone Street and East Park Avenue to the north and south and between South College Drive and South Miller Street to the east and west. And there's a variety of land uses that have been established, including residential to the north and to the east and west, as well as industrial development to the south and public facilities to the southeast, which include Hancock College. The zoning at the site is within the downtown specific plan railroad loft district. And there's also a multitude of zoning designations that surround the site, including a mix of residential, industrial, and public facility zoning, as well as the downtown plan. So this location is within an existing multi-tenant industrial development that was built in 1959 under a prior industrial zoning designation. And this project is an existing cell tower concealment production business that mainly makes fake trees and water towers. And there's a couple different components to the project. It includes receiving pre-made parts and assembling the parts, as well as doing minor cosmetic improvements. So some welding does occur at the project site, and there is a safety plan in place for all of the employees. So the city was notified about this project in 2018, and we determined that it had been established without permits. And the downtown specific plan prohibits new industrial uses from being established, but it does allow legal non-conforming uses to continue, change ownership, rebuild, and expand. So this conditional use permit tonight is required to allow the business to continue to operate as a legal non-conforming use. And there's four different areas that the project currently operates at. So the first area is the fabrication shop, which is the highlighted square. And then there's three different outdoor storage locations, which are shown in areas two through four. So the remaining five buildings and associated parking and outdoor storage onsite are not a part of this proposal. And during the December 15th hearing, there was some concerns expressed about the lack of information provided regarding the surrounding land uses at the multi-tenant site. And staff did some research, and we located 23 different tenant spaces across six different buildings. And we determined that 11 of the tenant spaces have uses which are legal non-conforming to the downtown specific plan, which is shown in the third row of the table on the right. And then there are six tenant spaces that conform to the downtown specific plan, which is shown on the fourth row of the table. And then there also are six vacant tenant spaces. So staff reviewed various city records, including business licenses, building permits, and discretionary project files when determining the status of a land use. So in conclusion, staff recommends the Planning Commission by motion, conditionally approve Conditional Use Permit U 2021-00004. And thank you, Commissioners. The applicant and staff are now available for questions.
Chair, you're muted.
Thank you very much. I was saying before we have any Commissioners ask questions, I have to ask for disclosure by Commissioners of any communications they may have had with the applicant. Does anyone wish to talk about any communication they have? No? Okay, seeing none? Does staff have, or do the Commissioners have any questions of staff this time? No? All right, let us move on to the applicant. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
This is Dana Eady. The applicant does have a presentation that we're going to bring up in just one moment.
Okay.
Are we ready? Thank you, staff. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. And again, thank you, staff, for bringing us along and getting us this far. We appreciate all your help. Again, obviously, the Commission heard this, I think it was at December 15th of last year, and it was continued. And we're just going to kind of present our perspective on the project. So can we get the next slide? First, the project description. From our perspective, and staff did a great job in explaining it, and we see it the same way, we just thought we'd go into a little bit more detail. We see it as kind of the project site and the project site. The larger project site is discussed, is 4.9 acres. That's the industrial park itself. It's a legal, non-conforming industrial park established in 1959, back when the railroad was there and that area was industrial. So that's the larger, and it's again, an industrial commercial business park, more or less. And then the specific project site, Composite Plastic System. Currently, now currently, it occupies about an 8,000 square foot building and a little bit more than 14,800 square feet of outdoor storage. But as we'll discuss in a minute, we're going to shrink it down a bit as directed by staff. Next slide, please. And again, we thought about the Planning Commission questions. In our minds, they were very good questions, right on the, right on point. I think some of them touched on, what is the intensity of the business activity compared to other activities? Question about other operations in the center was, I hopefully answered. Could composite plastic systems expand into other areas on the site? Will this legal non-conforming use stay indefinitely, you know, inconsistent with the downtown plan? View from our site, like Hancock Terrace, what does it look like? And compatibility with the neighborhood? Next slide, please. And again, we talked about composite plastic systems. This is what they do. Obviously, the main, the bulk of it is the monopine, the stealth monopines, but this is one of the projects, I happen to have worked on that one. That's on Donovan Road. Next slide, please. The project site again, once again, staff did a good job of showing it. We're going to just touch base on the site itself. Again, industrial park, southwest corner, Boone and College. And it's kind of a mixed bag. You see the three large buildings on the left-hand side, on the west side. To us, in our view, those are wholly industrial, nothing else, nothing more, nothing less. On the east side, the east half, where there's storage, there's two buildings. One along College and the other on the south side of the property. Those are kind of quasi-industrial commercial. The one along College is more quasi-industrial commercial. The one, the southerly building, has got a little bit more commercial component. And again, our building on the far west side, composite there, 4,000 square feet, we were using or are using that little narrow part of the building. That's 700 Boone. Based on the Conditional Use Permit, we won't be using that because that was occupied by a commercial use. We'll talk about that a little bit more. In terms of storage, composite plastic storage, just touched on. The storage area one, fronting Boone up there on the kind of the north side, if you can see with the kind of the yellow or golden rectangle. Storage area two, down on the left side there. And that's where you can see the false tree branches are stored. Storage area three, kind of in the center, well, directly in the center, is where the, I call them the tree trunks are stored. Obviously, and again, industrial to the south, as our neighbor. Next slide, please. One of our neighbors, obviously, to the west, is Hancock Terrace. We're aware of that, and we're going to describe a little bit more how we believe we're great neighbors with Hancock Terrace. Next slide, please. Neighbors to the north, the residential neighborhood, been there a long time, developed in the 40s, I think. And again, we think we get along well with those neighbors, again, across Boone. Next slide, please. That's just looking from Boone. In our view, that's industrial, nothing more, nothing less, just some industrial buildings, again, built around the 50s. Next slide, please. Onsite, that's our next door neighbor. I think they do insulation, but so that's our immediate neighbor to the east. Next slide, please. Onsite, that's a neighbor, one of the quasi, I call it industrial commercial. They refurbish appliances, and then they do sell them retail. Next slide, please. Another neighbor, I think that's another appliance business. The only reason I use that slide, he caught me taking his picture, so he asked me what I was doing, so I just thought I'd throw him in there. But that's a appliance business. Next slide, please. That's his storage area, kind of in the center of the site. I think several people use that storage yard. So it just gives you a feel of the site itself. Next slide, please. Again, back to the site itself. We looked at the storage areas, so composite, again, the ones in the kind of the golden rectangles or squares. There's other storage areas. The storage area kind of in the center on the east side, again, is shared by several of the tenants. There's another storage area between the two golden squares down at the bottom. That's Arnold's Asphalt, so that's another storage area. And then to the left, the red, between the red lines there. And the red line's a property line, so the red line, that's the property line to the project site. The other red line is the property line to Hancock Terrace. Between that is a city easement. And we call that neighborhood storage. And it works for us, we get along with them. So there's all kinds, it's a mixed bag over there. Next slide, please. Again, Composite Plastic Systems, this is what they do. This is shop area one. Now, I did, I missed a guy, he went to lunch before I could catch him welding. But again, in our view, it's not very intense. That's kind of what it looks like, that was a random shot. And it's just not intense in our minds, but that's shop area one, where they do do the welding. Next slide, please. Shop area two, where they do the painting, again, just a typical day, random shot. Next slide, please. So that's storage area one, that one fronts Boone. The racks in the back, we've been conditioned, we have to lower them a little bit to get them to match the height of the fence, and we're willing to do that. Next slide, please. Storage area two, that's where the false, the fake branches are stored. I could think of a lot of worse things that could be stored there in terms of view, but again, that's storage area two. And beyond in the back is the other industrial, so that's looking south, and that's the other industrial complex to the south. So storage area two, next slide, please. I kind of got a kick out of this. This is, I was in the Hancock Terrace apartments, just kind of looking around. And looking, now honestly, we've been conditioned, we have to lower the material stored, but that's the false branches. Again, when you look at it, it's kind of a, it's kind of a neat quirky thing because it just looks like landscaping. Again, I could see, I could think of a lot worse things to have to look at in the storage yard. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So to me, in my view, this is the most intense part of the operation, and it's based not on intensity of use, it's simply based on the size of the tree trunks or the columns. And that, again, that's in the middle of the site. So to me, that's the most intense part of the operation itself. And again, stored in the right place, in our view. Next slide, please. And again, just to reiterate, those columns are stored in that golden triangle, right in the center. You cannot see that, the back center, literally in the back, opposite of Boone. You can't see it from Boone, you can't see it from college. The only place you can see it from is, I guess, probably the third floor in Hancock, but no matter what you do there, no matter what the operation is, that's going to happen. Next slide, please. We looked at it from a city policy standpoint. We started with the general plan. We agree with Commissioner Seifert, he talked about industrial, all American building things in the city. General plan, land use. Goal number one, community character, maintain and improve the existing character of the community as the industrial and commercial retail center of northern Santa Barbara County and southern San Luis Obispo County. To us, industrial is up there with commercial. In our view, industrial is just as important in generating jobs, and it is part of the balanced community need. We believe we're doing great on the commercial, it looks like we're getting there. I think we are recognized as the hub for northern Santa Barbara County and southern San Luis Obispo County in terms of commercial. And we just, we think maybe it's time that we turn our focus more to industrial. And again, this is a small industrial business, but it is, in our view, an important component of the industrial fabric of Santa Maria. Policy, land use policy, number one, balance. I've always liked general plans because the primary component of a general plan, the beauty of a general plan to me is the policies do compete. You can interpret them any way you want. Obviously, we interpret it the way we think, and in terms of that balance, we think we contribute to that balance, in terms of the uses that meet the present and future needs of the community. So we're there now, we think we meet a present need, we recognize the future, the long-term need would be to redevelop that site at some point when the market dictates and do something like a Hancock Terrace. But at the present time, we think we're at the right place at the right time for now, until the market dictates that the future demand requires something else. Next slide, please. Conformity to the downtown plan. Again, obviously, the long-term vision of the downtown plan is probably high-density housing, but right now, the plan seems to recognize what's going on right now. Railroad loft district, downtown plan, the railroad loft district was added to the downtown plan area to provide a connection corridor between the downtown and Allen Hancock College. And the plan recognizes a number of existing industrial buildings and uses remain in the area that could potentially be reused with light industry uses or redeveloped in the future as live-work units, student housing, or retail uses. So we agree, we're consistent with the plan. We do think, I think this particular center, first, the plan recognizes this center. It's the only industrial that's in the area. So when the downtown plan spoke to this, it spoke directly to this particular center. But again, given the age, we believe it's not conducive for reuse. At some point, it will be redeveloped. But the beauty to us is the tone of this strategy, or the tone of these policies favor continued use until the market dictates. In other words, it doesn't say, get this industrial stuff out of here immediately. It seems that the tone to me says, when the market dictates, it'll be the time for it to happen, not immediately. Next slide, please. The downtown plan recognizes nonconforming uses and adds more flexibility than is provided by other parts of the code, straight from the downtown plan. Legal nonconforming uses in the downtown plan are provided greater flexibility than legal nonconforming uses elsewhere in the city. Pretty obvious, straightforward. In the downtown plan area, a legal nonconforming use may change ownership, rebuild, expand, so long as the use does not grow beyond the property where the legal nonconforming use is established. We meet that, we believe. Once a legal nonconforming use is replaced by a permitted use, then the legal nonconforming use shall cease and cannot be established. We meet that, as I indicated, we were using 700 East Boone, a retail shop, gave it a try. It was Arnold's Asphalt, well, the same owner of Arnold's Asphalt tried to, I think he had Arnold's Bargain Basement, a discount store, he gave it a shot, it didn't work. In my view, the building wasn't conducive to retail, but he did give it a shot. But that did cancel that out for future industrial use. So consistent with every policy in the downtown plan, we made it, and again, we can't use that 700 Boone building because it did have a commercial use. So other than that, we believe we fit to a letter of the downtown plan. Again, not the long term, which will happen when the market dictates, but we do meet the provisions of the downtown plan. Next slide, please. Conditional uses, so we're applied to the CM zone, the Commercial Manufacturing Zoning District, standard condition, the standard policy. I like to break them down, that, those paragraphs in the code are usually, literally that paragraph. I like to break them into parts so I can really get my head around them. Number one, those simular uses, which the planning commission finds to fall within the intent and purpose of this zone, that will not be more obnoxious or detrimental to the public welfare, are found by the planning commission to be compatible with the adjoining uses, provided that conditions and development standards are applied to mitigate any potential impacts. Well, we've been there, and things have been working, and with the conditions, I think we'll be even better. And then the, that section, 121605, conditional uses, lists several, obviously, conditional uses. We put a couple there at the bottom that we think fit. Obviously, one, screen material storage yard, that's an obvious fit. Two, I think for a finding, the reason that the simular use code is in there, because obviously, the code couldn't think of everything. There is no way in the world that when the code was derived, that they would have thought of a wireless telecommunications stealth facility. So that's why the condition's there. The simular use we looked at is auto body and fender repair and automotive. Next slide, please. Are we similar, as we see it? Auto body and fender and paint, they both have a welding component. I think the intensity is about the same, until I had a tour just last week, and I realized they both have a welding component. And my initial thought is maybe composite is more intense, but as I look at it, they're about the same. So in terms of welding, they're the same. Assembly, they do the same. Auto body, symbols, you know, hammers on fenders. Composite plastic system, hammers on the artificial tree chunks, more or less. Painting component, it's probably less intense, where an auto body shop has, needs all kind of environmental clearances, smoke stack, or air vents and those kinds of things. The painting component of composite plastic systems is probably less intense. And then, of course, auto body and paint, they both have storage components. Maybe composite's a little bit bigger, but we believe it's a match, in our mind. It's a simular use, is the way we see it, in terms of use and intensity. Obviously, very different, but in terms of intensity, the same. Next slide, please. We looked at the conditions that were applied by staff. Fire department conditions, there's several, but I just pointed out, you know, wanted to point out a couple of them. Again, there's a condition that regulates the compressed gas. There's a fire inspection required. Next slide, please. Planning department condition, the question was asked by the commissioners, could they expand within the property? Only, the building could not expand only with planning commission approval, and that's a condition in the conditional use permit, conditional number three. Likewise, with the storage yard, can the storage yard expand? Only with planning commission approval. So that's locked in. It is what it is unless it comes back to the commission to expand. Next slide, please. Other conditions, we have to do some improvements. We wrangle with this because we believe, again, we'd like to see the site redeveloped. We'd like to minimize investment, but we want to do reasonable investment. And so the staff did give us some conditions to adhere to, and we're going to adhere to them. Again, we want to do the right thing, but it's a balancing act, again, balancing the long term and the short term. We're conditioned to restripe and resurface. We're conditioned to add a trash enclosure or replace one. Next slide, please. That's the existing trash enclosure. We don't really use it, we use the regular rollout containers, but we've been conditioned to replace it with a new enclosure up to current city standards. We're going to do that. Next slide, please. That's the property line we talked about earlier. To the left is composite plastic systems in the project site, to the right is that city easement, what we call the neighborhood storage. This is kind of where we get into a little bit of the relationship, so we're going to resurface that. The two cars up front, during one of my visits, I chatted with one of the fellas, the vehicle is owned by somebody who lives in Hancock Terrace, and he parks on the composite site. I asked him why, he said, well, he just likes to park there and he smokes. Apparently, you can't, he told me he can't smoke at Hancock Terrace. So, fine with me, apparently, it's fine with composite plastic systems. So it's an example of how they coexist. The folks from Hancock actually come over there, well, some of them, of course, actually come over to composite to park. And again, that's the area we're supposed to resurface. We resurfaced on our side of the property line, I don't know what happens, you know, the pothole, do we do half of it, or do we get to share that? But anyway, we will do the resurfacing, and by the way, where that pickup truck is, we have to add a door. When we had 700 East Boone, where that little awning is, if you can see between the two cars up front, we had exiting that met the building code. Now that we don't have that, because it was a commercial use, we have to add a new door for exiting to meet building code. So that's another one of the improvements we have to do. And again, back in the back is storage yard two, where the false branches are stored.
Bill, how many more slides do you have?
About done.
You're already done, that's excellent. Okay.
Almost, couple more. Next slide. That's just a neighbor, Eli, and it just indicates that we work well together, the neighbors seem to store there, and we all get along. Next slide. And those are neighbors, they seem to use the site. The point is, I just got a kick out of that, and I think there's a relationship between the property and the neighborhood. So there's nothing antagonistic, it's a relationship. Next slide. We believe we're compatible with the neighborhood, we're already coexisting, we're consistent with the general plan in our view, the downtown plan and the CM zone, and with the conditions in place, we will reinforce neighborhood compatibility, location of uses, visual appearance, and safety. And that does conclude our presentation. Again, we do appreciate your bearing with this while we went through that. Thanks again, again, appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. And by the way, it was very nice seeing you after, you know...
Well, always great to be here. You guys really work too hard for me, though, so I only want to do a little of this. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right, so moving on, do we have any questions by commissioners for the applicant? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Bill, good to see you. I did have one question. On your nonconforming use slide, I think it was item number two or three, with respect to that the property, the projects, the nonconforming use can grow to the extent of the property, or something to that effect. Does that mean that it could expand into those areas that have already not been used for retail?
No, it cannot. There was another condition that said it couldn't. So I think what that's really referring to is probably that the, again, to me, there's two nonconforming uses. There's the tenants, some of the tenants are nonconforming, but I think it refers to the property itself, meaning it can expand, that's the way I see it. Meaning the overall, the 4.9 acre industrial park, it's limited. Because it's, that's a nonconforming industrial park with nonconforming tenants, at least that's the way I view it. Again, there's separate, there's separate conditions that say composite plastic systems cannot expand.
Okay. And then my second question is, is this a final and permanent home for the business? Or are they, as they grow, they're obviously going to maybe look for a larger site?
Yes, I might defer to the general manager, Mike Conley, but eventually, and again, our view, I think we're all on the same page. We'd like to see the site redeveloped. That site's about 60, over 60 years old. We want to see it redeveloped, we just believe markets will dictate. And beyond that, I defer to actually the business owner to elaborate any more than that.
Thank you, Bill.
Commissioner Lopez, any further questions?
No, I didn't know if the owner was going to...
Yeah, were we going to hear from the owner, Bill?
I apologize, I wasn't sure if you did an answer to that. If business grew and we cannot stay within that space, then we might look to maybe split the operation and work part of the operation in one location somewhere else, and then remain in that location. But the trends that we're looking at now, we should be able to remain there for a while.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seifert?
Thank you, Chair. This is to Mr. Scott. The slide that you showed with the trash enclosure and the conditions to rebuild the trash enclosure to standards, today's standards, you do realize that the trash enclosures have grown. They're twice as large, if not larger, than they used to be, and that small space, I'm just concerned, I didn't catch it really close where the property lines were, but you do need to be aware that the new trash enclosure spaces are at least 16 feet long, they have to hold two bins. And with the, I don't think this would affect you, but we have the new bin coming for the waste, food waste recycle. Can't see why that would be applicable here, but just to let you know, it's probably a little more than, it's not just rebuilding what you have there, it's going to grow. Just to let you know.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Further questions from commissioner members? Commissioner Blanco Hernandez, for the applicant this time, Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, one last question, I'm sorry. In the outdoor storage area number two on the plant set that was submitted, it shows a hazmat storage container. Looks to be like a typical C train, eight and a half by 40 feet long. What type of hazardous material would we store there?
Very good question, I'm glad you asked. I can address that. So because we store welding gases and propane, we're responsible to register each year with COOPA, which is the Santa Barbara County's hazardous waste group, and as such, they require that you outline where you would store hazardous waste should that occur. So hazardous waste, as their definition defines it, if we happen to spill household-grade latex paint on the ground, it now has become hazardous waste, it must be collected, cleaned, and stored somewhere. So we have to designate space. So for the sake of this application, we use the same plans and drawings as we do for COOPA and the same materials list of components stored. So specifically, what's stored in that container at this moment is propane containers, which are in locked cabinets, and latex paints, and empty barrels, and then some resin containers that are in five-gallon pails, there's approximately three of those that are stored. All are stored on spill containment pallets. We also store several containers of gas cans that are used to power pressure washers, and three containers of diesel, which are also for our trucks when they're in the road, they can keep a diesel container in the back of the pickup. So nothing of significance, and we have provided those, obviously, the COOPA reports are public record, but we've also provided those to the planning team as part of request.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Hernandez, did you have a question?
Yes. So I just want to confirm, all CPS does is they assemble the components, is that correct?
Well, I'll do my best... Well, I'll do my best to explain some of the processes. So the branches are manufactured at a different facility, and then brought into the site and stored. So branches are not fabricated on-site. They're just stored and shipped to the customer. The large trunk systems, as Mr. Scott referenced, are fabricated in Houston, Texas, and delivered on-site as whole assemblies. And what we are doing at the site is adding small pipes to those tower sections so that branches can be attached. And then we are using household-grade paints and texture materials to add texture to those poles to make them look like trees.
Okay. And from what I understand, the branches, the composite panels, and the antennas are manufactured at a facility in Mexico?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Blanco, did you have any questions at this time?
Sorry, no, not at this time. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it. Do we have any written communication, or does the public wish to weigh in on this?
Chair and Commissioners, we did not receive any written public comments, but we can see, oh, you know what, we don't have any attendees in Zoom currently.
Makes it easy, doesn't it?
Yeah, I do not have any speaker slips on this item either.
All right. Do we have, there was a long presentation, but I will ask, do you have any final, does the applicant have any final items they would like to say before we bring it back to public hearing being closed? Mr. Scott?
Just once again, just, no, thank you for just hearing us out. We really appreciate your patience with my long presentation. But thanks again, and we appreciate staff's help and your help. Thank you.
We don't think of it as long. We think of it as thorough. You were thorough, Scott, Bill. All right. Well, with that, then I will close the public hearing and put it towards the commission for any discussions or actions. Who wants to weigh in first? Oh, you're all so brave. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one more question for staff. What was the determining factor that the city attorney's office found to let this move forward to conditional use here?
This is Heather Wyden. Well, so the city originally became aware of the use, had some concerns about the use, realized that the use, while you can have a commercial manufacturing there as a grandfathered use, the particular use in question, CPS, would require a conditional use permit, and they did not have a conditional use permit. So they were originally cited and went through the process through code enforcement. But during that process, they explained to code enforcement that they wanted the opportunity to try and get a conditional use permit so that they could be in compliance. And we agreed to give them the opportunity to do that, and that's why you're here, they're here today. So should they be granted the conditional use permit, then they'll be able to continue to operate there with all the conditions that have been imposed. Part of the process was to work with code and find out what code enforcement's concerns were about the project, and make sure that conditions were added to the permit that would address all of those concerns. So there were a lot of concerns about the outside storage, and there's been a bunch of conditions added to make that less unsightly. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. But I guess, I understand in the screening of the storage areas, is it just imposed on this project, or is it imposed on the whole property? Whereas, the, well, I guess, I don't know how it could be conditioned to the rest of the parcel, because there are other areas that aren't screened, other outdoor storage areas that aren't screened. So is it, all those conditions are just imposed on this project, not on the property?
I believe outside storage requires screening under the code. So there are some code requirements that they have to comply with no matter what. But because they're here for a conditional use permit, which is a discretionary permit, the commission has the opportunity to impose additional conditions to address this particular project, to mitigate any potential negative impacts they think it could have on surrounding properties. And so there could be additional conditions here specifically addressing their operation.
Okay. But not the rest of the parcel?
Well, as far as every, all the other uses, those are independent. And if it's brought to our attention that there's any issues there where they're not in compliance with the code or anything like that, then the staff will address those independently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Any, who else would like to weigh in?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blanco? I do have another, I do have a question now that I think about it. I was trying to look back at prior notes and staff reports and try to recall how long CPS had been there, and what was actually there prior to them at this particular location. Do we have, can somebody maybe answer that? I don't know if the general manager or who might be able to answer that?
Yes, I'm willing to answer that question. So CPS moved into the facility in 2018, and the prior use of 701 Arctic, which is the southern half of the building, was used as storage facility as part of Arnold's Asphalt Company. And the north side, commonly referred to as 700 East Boone, was prior, it was vacant upon entry, but then prior to that, it was Arnold's Bargain Warehouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Commissioner Blanco?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hernandez, anything?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. Well, if anybody wants to make some final statements, we need statements. We also need action. I think before we take action, whoever is talking, we should make the round robin amongst the commissioners, and then if somebody wants to make an action item at that point. Commissioner Seifer, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Chair. Well, as I stated before, I still like this project, and I thought Mr. Scott's presentation went through the conditions very well, and showing us that we do have a reason to let this stay here. And as I stated before, I agree with Mr. Scott as far as the timeframe of this. Those buildings, they're not going to last forever. This will be redeveloped, and it will be done towards the downtown specific plan. So I think they've done a good presentation here. I like the product they're building, and I can see myself supporting this project.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Seifer. Who would like to go next? If anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah. No, I thank Bill for an excellent presentation. He's always given good presentations. I am a supporter of our downtown specific plan, a project that's coming in and was waiting on by our city attorney's office. If there wasn't that continuity there, I think I'd be very much against this, because I think we truly have to look at the direction that we're going with in our downtown specific plan. I know that they have, I forget how many employees, but they employ some considerable amount of people. What I didn't understand was, this project's being made to screen all their outdoor storage. And I guess my question to Heather was, or to the city attorney's office was, if this is the same parcel, it seems like the rest of the noncompliant storage areas would also be made to be screened. From what I understood from Heather, it seemed like only this particular project, even though it's on the same parcel. So I'm kind of on the fence, just because of the way that the downtown specific plan, and understanding that this is a viable business for the CPS that's in there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Blanco, Commissioner Hernandez, do you want to weigh in?
Yes. I'm having a really hard time, and I think we're at a crossroads as a commissioner, because we want to start the phase of getting businesses in this area that are compliant and that meet the vision of what we want for the future, and what the vision is for this. And while I do agree the business is a good business, and they employ about 15 to 25 people, depending on the demand, all of the, you know, now that staff has provided the tenant space and the business name, most of the spaces are about, more than half are legal nonconforming use, and so those would get phased out. And the ones that are conforming, of course, are things or businesses that we would see in downtown in the future. So I'm having a hard time determining whether this is the time where we move forward and say, no, this is nonconforming, we need to move forward, or whether we allow this business to stay for so many years. Because I do get, you know, the economy will dictate, but a business is going to want to stay as long as they can in the location where they're at, because that's just common business sense. So I am having a hard time approving, and I think that, while I get that right now it meets it, I think it's because it's been there and they've made it work. I don't know if, if now that we've, we're trying to phase in the downtown plan, if we're really going to, you know, allow other businesses. The other thing is that we do have six vacant spaces. So if we deny, is this place going to sit vacant as well, like the other lots? And so that's a wasted space. So I'm on the fence right now, and I don't know. It just depends on, you know, what the commission, if we're serious about moving to downtown, or is having jobs and having a business there more important at this time. Nothing further.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I do agree with a lot of the points that Commissioner Hernandez has made. Very well stated. You know, it's not an easy one, because, you know, you don't want to discourage businesses where they can thrive, especially if they're somewhat compatible, I think, like the presentation alluded to, and it does make some sense. They're somewhat compatible, at least to the surrounding properties there, not so compatible to the west or the north because of residential, but nevertheless, existing industrial in that general area. But, you know, I think if you have a plan, if you don't start working towards that plan in some degree, how are you ever going to get there? How are we ever going to get to that final product if we're not working towards that? And, you know, there's some good points about it. Economies will dictate what happens there. Yeah, but I think, I think there's also something to be said about planning and enabling those things to happen a little bit faster. And so I do have a little bit of a hard time with it as well. You know, the other thing is, there's kind of a little bit of a precedent, too. If it's easy to establish a nonconforming business, and then maybe work your way out of that by, you know, negotiating with the city and coming up with a way to continue your business, it just allows people the opportunity to say, well, you know, I think we can get through this. We just need to negotiate something, rather than realize that, you know, the city is not going to be so flexible all the time and will push back. And says it has a plan, you should have been aware of the plan, and the plan is the plan, and we want to move forward with it. So it is a tough one. It is a tough one. I don't want to see any business not be able to succeed. But in this case, it's very tough, because, you know, if we're going to have a vision, if we're going to try to deliver a plan that the community wanted, we should be striving towards that and not really going away from it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco. So I have to say, I mean, obviously, being a business owner myself, I don't want to, I see a business move out of the area. I do like the fact that they are hiring 15 to 25 people. But as I was really thinking about this over the last, you know, since we saw them last, and then I saw Bill's presentation, and I get it. It's funny, a lot of the things that Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioner Blanco brought up were things that I had already been struggling with. You know, it's, the problem that I have, you know, first of all, if we take this plot of land, and as Commissioner Hernandez alluded to, you know, you look at the legal nonconforming, there's about 48% of the tenants are legal nonconforming, that's 11 of them. Then you have conforming of six and vacant of six. So there's 52% that's those two categories. If we don't allow this building there, then that shifts one more over, and you end up with now 57% of that building. So little by little, there's this push to doing what the downtown specific plan wants, which is, which is seeing these businesses move to other areas. And I think that's, I think that's good. I think it's good policy that at some point, we need to, as Commissioner Blanco said, we need to really take a look at the plan that everyone put together, and say that when the opportunity presents itself, and especially when you start having a preponderance of tenants, that we should take advantage of that. This business has only been in that space since 2018. And the question that Commissioner Lopez asked, I believe it was Commissioner Lopez asked, you know, whether they're going to be there a long time, or they're going to be there some short period of time. And the answer was, in essence, a long time. Because if they grow beyond that space, they will maintain that space, and they will get additional space somewhere else. So the plan is to be there a long time. And that's difficult for me, because it's not just some short-term thing. I mean, it's stated that they're going to be there for quite some time. And in addition, there's two final things. First is, you know, we set up the town, we set up the downtown specific plan, and we presented it to the community, including the development community. And the TOBS group put a lot of money into buying into that plan, and that we, the city, would follow through on our end of things, and that they would see eventually parcels near them, like this one, that will be redeveloped. If we create a plan, man, how is it developers are not going to point to this specific decision and say, yeah, you know, I'm just not buying in that you guys are really going to follow through with this? And so I think it may impact other developments in other places. And that's the unfortunate thing about it. I really am concerned that that's going, we're going to see that happen. For me, the findings are the second, that's the second thing that I have problems with. I mean, you look at the findings of A, that the project meets the vision and intent and requirements of the general plan and the downtown specific plan, the nonconforming use. Vision and intent, I doubt seriously that that's what, that's what the downtown specific vision and intent is, is maintaining the industrial areas. And then the other one was E, that the proposed use will have no adverse effect upon abutting property. So the TOBS group put up their very, very nice terrace, you know, the Hancock Terrace, and it will impact them. They waited it out, and I'm sure they're thinking, well, we would sure like that at some point it transitioned over. And if we don't, if we don't follow through with our own plan... if we don't follow through with our own plans, then I don't think that we have credibility and we have a real, a real problem then. So that, that, that's my opinion. We need action of some kind. So if someone would like to make a motion of some kind, that's, that's what we need. Um, and we need to take a vote. Commissioner Seifer?
Yeah, um, well, I, I still say that, uh, that we need this business in town and we need those employees. I'm going to, uh, make a motion that we approve conditional use permit U two zero two one dash zero zero four for composite plastic systems.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifer. Do we have a second?
Nope.
I, I hear no second. Um, so the motion fails at that, at that point. Um, do we have a motion for denial? I'll make that motion. Uh, I mo- I move that we deny composite plastics, uh, conditional use permit at seven-one Arctic Avenue and, uh, for what Heather, uh, was asking about, um, the findings being, uh, that they do not meet the vision and intent per finding A and that they will, uh, and that they do have an adverse effect on the adjoining property, which in this case would be Hancock Terrace. I'll make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
All right.
And Chair, two Dickerson Commissioners, before the roll call, um, just want to discuss a continuance date so that we don't need to renotice the item. Um, so there are two upcoming hearing dates and there's a March sixteenth date and then there's also, um, April sixth. March sixteenth is getting a little full, um, because we already had some items and, that we anticipated bringing that date. So if we add this item for a resolution for denial on that date, then we would have this one, the one before, that was the Sunset Recycling, and then potentially three more items that day. So we'd be at five items. Um,
That, that's a, that's a long one. So I, I, I would suggest we push it off the April meeting.
Okay, so April sixth, uh, would be the next, um, public, public hearing.
All right. Go ahead and continue, um, with the, uh, oh, uh, let's see, we, we needed a roll call, that's what we needed. And that this would be continued to the, um, April sixth, uh, meeting.
Chair Dickerson?
Hi.
Commissioner Lopez?
Hi.
Commissioner Seifert?
Hello.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Hi.
And Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And, uh, and I'm sorry, gentlemen, uh, or I, we do like the, the thing. I, I hope you find someplace else in our, in our community. Um, all right, moving on to number four, I'm, uh, well, I guess it's number five. Um, and Commissioner Seifert, um, yeah?
Yeah, uh, Chair, I, uh, I have a financial, uh, agreement with the owner of this property and I'm going to be recusing myself for tonight.
Thank you very much for attending, uh, previously and have a nice evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you. Okay, Apex Auto Glass Plan Development Permit at two oh two West Beteravia Road. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just bear with me a moment while I get the, uh, presentation up. All right. So thank you, Chair, uh, members of the commission. My name is Frank Alvaro. I'm the principal planner, uh, at the City of Santa Maria. Uh, this project is a plan development permit for a point eight acre project site located at two oh two West Beteravia Road. Uh, there's the project site there. You can see the, uh, location is just, uh, west of South Broadway, uh, on the frontage of Beteravia Road. Um, other uses along this portion of, uh, Beteravia include, uh, some industrial and service-oriented uses, trailer sales and repair facility, automotive repair, uh, tile and, uh, construction material, uh, uh, locations or facilities. Uh, but you do have more commercial uses at the intersection of Beteravia and Broadway. The site is within the PD C two zone district, uh, and you can see that zone district in red on the screen. Uh, as you see just immediately to the west, we have a different zoning and that zoning is PD CM. So it transitions to an industrial zoning, uh, district just west of this project site. Here's the site plan that's proposed. Uh, there is an existing structure on the site, uh, but the remainder of the site is simply paved asphalt. Um, the proposal is to, uh, place an automotive glass repair facility at this location. Excuse me. Uh, the, uh, the new building would be approximately six thousand six hundred square feet in size, which would be used for office and the main bulk of the repair, uh, location. One thing I'll note while the, uh, site plan is up on the screen is that the parking is met by this development and the, uh, site plan, uh, has been modified to provide additional landscape area to meet the minimum fifteen percent requirement, uh, for landscape area for this location. Here we have some, uh, photographs of the site. Uh, the first photograph, uh, in the upper left corner is looking, uh, eastward, uh, towards Broadway. And you can see the existing building on the site. It's the Tan Building. Um, let me highlight it here. In this location here, that's the existing building on the site. Uh, this back paved area is also part of the, uh, site that's going to be developed. And on the left-hand side, you see the frontage. There had been an auto dealership located at this location. They did some, um, minor improvements, uh, by putting some, uh, retention areas up front adjacent to Beteravia Road. Uh, to the, uh, right-hand side, the upper right, that's looking west. And you can see the, uh, metal buildings behind the site. These buildings are, um, actually in the industrial zone as is the buildings, uh, that are further to the west separated by the chain link fence with slats and some landscaping. And then finally, the lower photograph is a photograph, uh, looking southbound at the existing structure that's on the site. This is, uh, it's a little difficult to tell on the photograph. It's a slump stone building with, uh, sloped roof, asphalt shingles, I believe. And you can see the signage, uh, for the former facility, uh, that still is remaining on the site. Here is the floor plan. Uh, this is a two-story, uh, building. Uh, the bulk of the, uh, building will be a clear story to the upper level and the lower, uh, floors are the, uh, work spaces. And you can see there's three service bays that are proposed. Um, the municipal code does have a definition for the typical size of a service bay. And as you could imagine, many more cars might fit into this location, into this, uh, portion of the building, but the applicant has described their business in terms of, uh, replacing auto glass and the storage of, of materials that's necessary for that. And, uh, staff agrees with their assessment of what a bay should be for this particular use. And so for this location, we're considering this three service bays. And that's where the, um, site parking, uh, meets the minimum requirement generated by the, the use and, and the bases is one aspect of that use. Here's the, uh, upper level loft, essentially where the main offices will be in a break room. And you can see on the, uh, left-hand side, it's open to below. So that would be open to the work areas on the first floor. Here's a, uh, rendering of the front elevation. This would be the elevation that faces Beteravia Road. Uh, staff and the applicant worked back and forth with a few iterations of the, the metal building, uh, to add some articulation to the roof line, some additional height, and also add some decorative features like the eyebrows that are shown over the main storefront entry as well as over the roll-up overhead doors and the pedestrian door, uh, shown on the right side at the elevation. Um, this, you can tell by the blue color of the windows that this is not a black and white, uh, photograph or a, uh, rendering. These are the colors that are proposed for the facility. There's three different shades of, of gray tones. Uh, and as you can see, their placement is shown here. Uh, the one aspect about the, uh, elevated parapet height is it will be better able to screen any rooftop equipment that might be placed on the building in the future. One thing, additional item that the, uh, staff and applicant came to an agreement on was to help break up some of the, uh, expanse of the metal, uh, building by putting some decorative, uh, trellis screens in certain locations, uh, on the front of the facility and then planting some vine plant materials to help grow up onto the face of the building. Now, this is just an example. This is not proposed by the applicant. This was actually something that staff showed to the applicant and they agreed with. We don't know, uh, what the, the look of the decorative screen is going to be, but this is just a, a representation of where those screens would be and the kind of thing that, um, the applicant has agreed to. Here's elevations of the sides and the rear. Uh, the roll-up door bays will be towards the rear. Um, and just going back, I will note that there are two roll-up board, door bays that face Beteravia Road. Um, the policy of the city has been to try to avoid views into repair facilities and the applicant has agreed to the conditions where these doors will remain closed except when vehicles are entering or exiting the repair bay, uh, location for, uh, repairs. So here's again the side elevations and the rear elevations. Just to provide some context, here are some, uh, nearby site buildings. Uh, the top three photographs are on the, uh, north side of Beteravia Road and going, um, left to right is essentially going, uh, from the west to, towards the east. Uh, so you have a masonry building with some metal elements and a metal roof. You've got a, um, masonry building with a front facade that's masonry and then, uh, metal buildings behind. And similarly, the Tile Co., which is a little bit further to the west, has a, uh, masonry construction with metal buildings behind. On the, uh, same side of the street, the south side of the street that this facility's on, um, there is a, another storage lot that separates this metal building from the, uh, facility, uh, the proposed site. But you can see the metal buildings here with the screened storage. And then further down, here is another standing seam metal building. As you go further down, uh, further westbound on the south-hand side, there are some tilt-up concrete, more metal, there's some wood-faced buildings. So it's a, quite a eclectic mix of elevations and styles in this location. This is a depiction of the landscape plan. Um, as you can see, there's going to be a, a number of trees added to the site. Uh, these are the areas of new landscaping. So there'll be new landscaping, uh, around the proposed building. The applicant's also adding additional landscaping around the existing building and that brings the site up to the minimum fifteen percent that's required by code. Just one other, uh, thing, I mentioned the retention basin in the front. Um, there is a requirement, this area of Beteravia Road has not been constructed to its full width in terms of, uh, the curb-to-curb street width. Um, the, uh, therefore the project is required to provide a dedication of right-of-way or an offer of dedication of right-of-way. That requirement, um, has been fully vetted through engineering and planning. Uh, we've looked at the code and, uh, the applicant and our engineering division has come to an agreement about, uh, how that dedication will take place, when it will take place, and, uh, and essentially a deferment of modifying the site until such time as the road widening project is actually moving forward. There's no set date for when that road widening project would occur. Um, so for now, the city staff and, as well as the applicant, are comfortable just simply entering into an agreement about what will happen when and possibly if that road gets widened. Uh, but for now, the applicant can take advantage of the site as it exists now, the basin facility in the front. And, um, as I say, th- this was something that was negotiated, uh, between city staff and the applicant and we've come to a, a, an understanding and a resolution. And that understanding is represented in some of the, uh, conditions that are included in the permit. And so finally, I'd like to conclude with the staff's recommendation to the commission that the planning commission by motion approve the plan development permit, PD twenty twenty one dash zero 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 two. And the, uh, staff is available for questions and the applicant and the, uh, business owner are both in the attendance in the, uh, chambers and are also available for questions. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Frank. Uh, before we, uh, have any questions by commissioners, I would like to ask the commissioners to disclose any communication they may have had with the applicant. Have any of the commissioners had any, no? All right, then, um, do any of the commissioners have any questions of staff at this time? Okay, so Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, you showed, uh, some elevations that depicted the parapet heights. On the rear of the building, the parapets, um, were only halfway or about a third of the way across. Is that where the proposed mechanical units are going to be?
Commissioner, I'm sorry. I, I didn't understand the last thing you stated.
The, the, the elevations that you showed on, um, uh, sheet A three point O showed the, the rear elevations substantially lower than the front except for on the east end. And looking at the section that was given in our staff report, it shows that the, uh, a proposed rooftop unit is, well, there's a proposed, uh, unit on the back of the building, but is, is there a condition to screen it from all four sides or just the main view from the public?
Yes, and, and there is a condition that, that all mechanical equipment be fully screened from all elevations. Um, I realize there is another metal building s- immediately behind this location, uh, but, uh, typically in these cases, the main thing that staff is looking for is that they be screened from public view. But, uh, when this comes through building review, uh, planning will be reviewing this and looking for screening, uh, that's appropriate around all four sides of the, the roof.
And then, uh, another question I had was with the trash, uh, pickup location, uh, is there maneuvering there for the trash truck?
So that's something that our engineering division has, uh, discussed with the applicant and, um, our utilities division. Uh, here's the refuse enclosure here. Um, utilities did call out that the typical is for them to be able to pull in and not have to back out. Uh, so in some cases, particularly in these sites that are infill sites and being redeveloped, um, we have the flexibility to require that the applicant, uh, roll the bin out so that the refuse truck does not have to make any significant backing movements. And that, to my understanding from working with engineering, that's the agreement here. And that, to my understanding from working with engineering, that's the agreement here is that the location of the enclosure can remain, but the owner will be responsible for positioning those bins in a way that is satisfactory to our utilities division.
Okay. And then my last question is, parking spaces 20 and 21, are they backing out the entire way or do they use the bays to kind of maneuver into and then come out headfirst?
Those, we mentioned this to the applicant, they're probably just going to be used by employees, but they may be used for storage of vehicles that are awaiting repair. It's unlikely any customers would ever make it to that location back in the back and then need to back completely out. So the applicant is aware of the difficulty that one would have using those two spaces, but is acknowledging that they'll control those in a way that isn't going to put customers in a bad spot.
Okay. And thanks for working with the applicant on making that building look, it's a good-looking building, so thank you guys.
Thank you.
That's all. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Frank. Any other questions of staff by commissioners? No? Okay. I actually have a question. I know there isn't any formal understanding of the widening of the street, but do you have, I mean, or is that something that's two years, five years, 10 years down the road? I mean, what are we thinking here? I mean, what would be the, what would be the minimum amount of time?
Mr. Chair, David Bayes, Public Works Engineering. The question that you're asking is what is the timing of the widening of Beteravia? And it's uncertain at this time. As we move along, as in this particular project, we, as we have the opportunity, the city requires right-of-way for that widening. At this present time, there's not, that I can see in the next five years that this is not, it's not on the radar. There isn't, we just completed a traffic update of the city's traffic model and general plan, and following that, there is an analysis that will be concluded, conducted, excuse me, that will identify the timeliness of the widening of roadways that are identified in the circulation element.
Okay. Thank you very, yeah, that answered my question, David.
Okay.
Frank, what, so, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify. So there's a deferment of landscaping that's being done, or is it strictly the, anyway, go ahead.
Certainly. Thank you, Chair. No, it, the, what is being deferred is this site's response to that widening requirement. Initially, we were looking at, you know, directing the applicant to remove any private improvements from that future right-of-way dedication area. So in other words, the basin, the landscaping at the front, and maybe even some of the parking would have had to have been essentially removed from the site. The property line would have been drawn a number of feet back, and any private improvements and private development of this site would have to fully occur only within the private property. What this agreement allows the applicant to do is utilize that portion of right-of-way that's being offered for dedication until such time as that offer and the development and widening of Beteravia actually takes place.
No, that, now that I understand it better, that seems very appropriate, so. Anything else from commissioners? If not, we can hear from the applicant. Oh, Commissioner Blanco, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, Chair. So question regarding the existing building, is that going to be part of the Apex operations? Are they going to use that for their operations? And are there any improvements that are being required of the existing building? I know that there's landscaping going in around it, and it looks like the trash enclosure would be near there, but is there, you know, so it's a two-part question. How is that building going to be part of the operations? And then also, are there any improvements to the physical structure?
So the applicant has, thank you, Chair and Commissioner member, the applicant has not proposed any modifications to that existing building. As you noted, they've added some landscape area adjacent to it, but that building will remain as is, and my understanding is the building will be used for additional office space, but the applicant can provide some clarification on that building's use.
Thank you. Thank you. Unless there's further questions, we will, we can hear from the applicant at this point.
Good evening, Commissioner's staff. Tom Martinez.
Your, the mic isn't kicking in, at least I can't hear anything.
Do you want my mask on?
Oh, no, no, no. You just need to get closer. Is that you, Tom?
Oh. I'm sorry, you can't hear me? I've never been told, I've never been told I was quiet. Tom Martinez, 2624 Air Park Drive, architect for the project. We appreciate staff's effort. This has been a work in progress. We realize that it's a tight space, but the nature of the operation, the, we could make it work. The customers aren't really driving anywhere on the site other than parking right in front. At that point, it is the employees that are maneuvering the vehicles inside. The back parking is primarily for any vehicles that might be waiting for glass. They'll use that more for storage, a secure storage that they can lock up in the evening or overnight before that glass arrives, et cetera. But again, we've been working with staff, both Frank and David, regarding the entire project, more recently, the offer to dedicate, and the offer to dedicate is something that has been going on, correct me if I'm wrong, David, I want to say probably 20 years, 25 years. We've done a number of projects along Beteravia Road that they have asked for the offer of dedication. Obviously, when the dedication does occur, if it ever occurs, there are areas where, you know, landscaping will be reduced below the 15%. There's a lot of, a lot of areas that are not developed that don't have any landscaping, so anything that is done currently is kind of anticipation of, you know, what will happen in the future. So we've agreed with all, pretty much all the conditions with staff. The owners are both present if there's any questions that are, that the commissioners have.
All right. Thank you very much. Do the commissioners have any questions of Tom or of the owners at this time, the applicants? Okay, I don't see any questions. With that in mind, let us, has there been any written communication? I don't see any attendees, so I'm assuming there's no public comment at this moment.
Yeah. Chair Dickerson, commissioners, we've not received any written comments, and I do not have any speaker slips either.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dana. Says on the agenda to do a applicant closing statement. Tom, is there anything else you want to throw out there for us before we bring it back? Seeing none, unless he, is he wandering about? No. Then let's go ahead and close the public hearing, and if the commissioners have any comments they wish to make or actions. Does anyone want to say anything about this? Okay, then I will make just one quickie comment, and that is that I like this project. It seems appropriate to the area involved. There's a lot of automotive things there, and it's a good-looking building, and I think it seems like it's an appropriate, appropriate business and construction for that site. Anyone else? Commissioner Hernandez?
I'd like to make a motion.
By all means.
I move that we approve Apex Auto Glass Plan Development Permit at 202 West Beteravia Road.
Do I have a second? Second? Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert. And Chair Dickerson.
Aye. Nicely done. Thank you very much, guys, and let's see.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify just for the record, because Commissioner Seifert's name was called, that he did recuse himself and has not been participating.
Yeah, that should be on the record. Okay, so we did item five, and we did item six, so finally, is there anything that staff has, staff reports?
Yes, thank you, Chair Dickerson and commissioners. This is Dana Eadie. I just wanted to give you an update on our upcoming hearing dates and study sessions. Our next scheduled hearing would be March 2nd, but we do not have any items ready for that date, so we'd like to cancel that hearing date. On March 3rd, we are planning on having a study session that day. We're going to be giving your commission a briefing on our housing element update, and so that'll be the only item on the March 3rd date. And then March 16th, we will be having a hearing that day. We have the two items that were continued from tonight's hearing, and then, as I mentioned, there'll be three others. Then March 17th, we also have a study session scheduled, and there's two projects that we'd like to present to you on that date. And then moving into April, we have April 6th as well. We've got, actually, I should correct myself. One of the items we had tonight was continued to March 16th. The second item was actually continued to April 6th. So we do have quite a few hearings and study sessions coming up. One of the items I'd also like to give your commission a briefing on is on Senateville 9, and I'm looking at doing that at the March 16th hearing, because our study session dates are pretty full already. So we have a lot going on, and we're staying busy. So that's what I have to update you on tonight, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dana. Commissioners, anybody have anything they want to bring up? Mr. Chairman? Oh, Commissioner Lopez?
Just real quick, thank you guys for sharing the broadcast of the Zoom meeting on the, as part of our screens. That's very helpful. Thank you. And then one other thing I was going to ask, is there any way we can get an email with the zoned administrator hearing agendas? When you guys do those?
Yes, Commissioner Lopez, we can definitely let you know when we have those items scheduled. Would you just like to be notified with the hearing agenda and, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If that's possible, yeah, thank you.
Yes, I'll pass that on to Kathleen, because she does send those emails out.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? No? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Thank you all.